Call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
Can I borrow, can I switch sheets with you? I gave you mine.
This here?
Oh.
Oh.
Oh, my goodness.
Your names.
Well.
There's an order. There's an order.
It's fine. McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here. Uh, pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Uh, but comment on agenda items?
None.
Uh, notice of executive session meetings?
Uh, there was a notice, uh, there was an executive session held immediately prior to this meeting to discuss the pink bean settlement.
Uh, approval of minutes, uh, August 6th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
Also move second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Uh, approval of minutes, August 13th, 2024, study session minutes, motion to approve.
So move second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Uh, communication?
None.
Uh, presentation, Meadville Community Revitalization Corporation update. Mr. Andy Walker?
Hello, Mayor. Uh, do you mind if I?
No.
Sit or speak over there when you pass this up?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
Uh, just because of the laptop that we're working on, see if this fires up again. I just have about a half dozen slides and, um, so Councilman Andy Walker, I worked for Allegheny College as the Executive Director for Economic Civic and Community Engagement. Uh, is that turning on Peter?
I hear it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's warming up.
Might need to turn maybe this, this light off or just to see it.
Come here.
It was, it's.
Well, now I did. There, is that all right?
Yeah, I think that's.
Are you want to vote for it? It's up to you. So, Council, uh, probably in January or February, um, you were invited to sort of stakeholder interviews, then with the Urban Development Advisors, uh, who was a consultant that was hired through the college. We had some funding from the Richard King Mellon Foundation, and I'll get some more context. Uh, Mayor Kinder, you and I participated, um, through a series of stakeholder, a stakeholder committee that was formed probably somewhere, probably in earnest in June of 2023 that met, um, to sort of talk about the need for a community development corporation, uh, which today has now been named the Meadville Community Revitalization Corporation. And I'm here today to just try to give you an update. So sort of as an overview is sort of this, um, little bit of the word salad of what I call Meadville's ecosystem of community and economic development. And, um, there's, of course, the players, as many of us know it, right? Then, of course, the city itself, the county, in terms of the county planning office and their role, um, the county's Economic Progress Alliance of Crawford County is the countywide economic development agency, the city's redevelopment authority in the middle, Common Roots has come on the scenes doing affordable housing, um, the Northwest Pennsylvania Investment Cooperative, New Pick, you'll see there is a newer organization. And in the lay of the land, the landscape of all these organizations, and even my own experiences, um, having worked for the redevelopment authority and then a city manager, is that we've lacked for a dedicated organization that wakes up every day thinking about downtown Meadville and, and doing development. Um, all these partners do really great work, but as we all suffer from, suffer from capacity, the redevelopment authority is doing, is working on blight issues citywide, they, they've taken on the city housing plan, they're not just a downtown development revitalization organization. The Economic Progress Alliance, while they've had buildings downtown, they don't consider themselves a downtown redevelopment agency. They work on sort of traditional machinery, equipment, business development, brownfield redevelopment, um, business park development. And so the study that we had been doing was sort of making the argument that we needed this capacity of a new organization for downtown. And that has, in fact, that was one of the findings, right, of, of the recommendations of Urban Development Advisors in the spring. Uh, here's a little bit of a, just a history of that timeline. I had mentioned already the steering committee that had been assembled, um, that did this sort of same landscape analysis of various planning efforts and organizations. In the fall then, um, sort of also worked on sort of what is the geographic area then of a proposed organization and what would the governance and, um, structure look like? That's when we also then brought on Urban Development Advisors to, um, do these stakeholder interviews and held a public meeting at the end of February. And then eventually launched into, in the spring, and finally actually in May was an actual incorporation of the Meadville Community Revitalization Corporation. And then in June was the very first inaugural board meeting, um, of these individuals who have agreed to serve as volunteer leaders. So the Urban Development Advisors report sort of made broad recommendations of what types of areas and organizations might be included. And so the folks on the left here, you'll see 12 individuals. And then you see sort of there, as we all do in Meadville, we wear lots of different hats. Um, and so you'll see some of the affiliated organizations that those individuals represent. And at the very bottom of the list, you'll see Renner Rubleski, who is the city, so per the bylaws of the new organization, the city has, City of Meadville has an ex officio representative, non-voting member on the board, um, and that is Renner Rubleski, the Director of Community Development. It's just, I don't have them highlighted here, but the, um, this board then chose their executive committee, their board leadership, so Amara Geffen, um, retired, faculty member, retired several years from Allegheny at this point, but very active in sort of art and placemaking and public art, um, is the board chair. Um, Don Roten is the vice president, Don is the Executive Director of the Meadville Medical Center Foundation, um, and then Rob Smith is the treasurer and the Secretary Heather Fish, uh, the business owner of downtown. That board then, um, elected sort of me in a new sort of role. So I still, to serve as the inaugural Executive Director of the new organization. Um, I will still continue to work for Allegheny College, um, for two years, but the goal, and we're still working through these sort of logistics, but the goal is that I would be 100% contracted by the new organization to run the new organization. Part of that is that the, um, I think Council's aware that some of the early funding that did some of the studying and so, um, for this effort came from the Richard King Mellon Foundation, but the college has applied on behalf of the new organization, um, for an operating grant. In fact, we expect maybe this week that we'll learn, at least they, the, their board meets this week to, to award funds, whether or not we'll learn, I don't know, but, um, would be a two-year operating grant. And so for those, then it'll be granted to the college, but then sub-granted to the MCRC. And so while the MCRC is, it's, it's its own independent 501(c)(3), they will contract them with the college for my employment services, at least for the first two years. We'll see how that works and what that looks like going forward. And then I think some of you are aware is that along the way, in addition to Urban Development Advisors, who did sort of that public consultant, Alter Consulting Group out of Erie, um, has helped with some management consulting, will probably assist going forward with, um, the various structures. We talked about that need of an organization, right, waking up every day thinking about downtown Meadville. Uh, so this is the, in fact, the proposed area, uh, focus area, and that is, um, what was the Central Business District, the CBD, and now probably has a different zoning title, Peter, I'm looking at you, um, but.
I can still call.
Okay, so it's still essentially functionally the Central Business District, um, bounded, and, and I don't consider this a boundary, right, I consider it a focus area. Um, there's certainly gateways and other projects that might come along that make sense to work on, but, um, the essentially west to the downtown mall and the bypass, frankly, um, the south is Pine Street there, um, and then on the east side, North and South Main Street bounded by Diamond Park, um, and then to the north on North Street. Uh, so roughly the geographic focus area that the MCRC intends to focus its areas. In terms of sort of a programmatic primaries of focus, um, real estate and business development, so these are also the three committees that have formed by the board and, um, so real estate business development, placemaking, and then communications, marketing, and engagement. And I'll just sort of give a brief sort of menu of what some of these things might look like, activities might look like. Um, so from real estate business development perspective, residential and upper floor development, um, that might be acquisition, rehab, rental, or resale of real estate. It might be new infill development on lots that are on vacant lots. We expect that there'll be public-private partnerships, where it might be a private developer who is working but is looking for the assistance of tax credits or grant writing or other project administration. Using grants, loans, and tax credits. We've talked, I mean, the, one of those major tools in terms of tax credits is Neighborhood Assistance Program. Crawford County until, well, until about a year ago, when Common Roots was, um, was awarded tax credits for their Prospect Street housing project, um, that was the first successful NAP application from Crawford County ever, we think. Um, so it's sort of an untapped resource of, of seeking private investment, but being incentivized by the use of state tax credits. We know that certainly you can have rehab buildings, but you also need then businesses to fill them. And so there's going to have to be some sort of business development recruitment strategy to accompany of this. And then we also see the creation of sort of a capital fund or a, or an equity fund that allows the, um, so we'll talk, you know, the, the new MCRC will ideally receive some operating support, but we'll still need to raise capital, right? If, if we decide that it's important that we need to, I sometimes call it the strike while the iron is hot fund, you know, where you need capital to acquire a building and a strategic, because maybe it's of strategic importance, um, we'll need to raise capital to do that. Um, as we look at placemaking, that might be gateway enhancements to the downtown, that might be cooperating with the city and Pendott, or streetscape improvements, curb sidewalks, lighting, traffic signals. Obviously, all those things require collaboration with, with you folks. Um, facade improvements, the redevelopment authority has operated a facade, um, loan fund, and we'll, we'll talk about how we might cooperate to leverage and bring additional grants in from the State Department of Community and Economic Development to support facade improvements. We know that trail connectivity is important, right, was we see the trail segments that are under development and soon to be completed, the Ears Trail that'll eventually come into to Bicentennial Park, the new Bessemer Trail that the Economic Progress Alliance, um, completed, and then the Pendott sort of six and 19 Rogue Diet Trail. When those are all connected in that, I think that's sooner than later, but that's 14 miles of connected trail from North Meadville to the east side of Kite Lake, and that's a pretty significant segment that can drive visitorship. And, and so we want to be ready to connect, and how do we bring that traffic into downtown? Um, and then, you know, public art and green space planning. When we look at communications, marketing, and engagement, this is the sort of the third committee and a little bit of a catch-all, but, um, we, we hope to collaborate with partners on what is, what's an appropriate branding and marketing strategy for downtown. Uh, Meadville might be known as the tool and die capital of the world to some, does that resonate with our commercial or retail business district? Maybe not. Um, MEVA, the Meadville Independent Business Alliance, is working under Experience Meadville, and so maybe that's the right one we'll, we'll determine, but we hope to bring those folks together to talk about, um, what makes sense for downtown. The community, the famous elusive community calendar, right, of how do we promote, there's so much going on in this community, um, how do we work with those partners to centralize that and again to market, promote those, um, events? And though I personally hate coordinating events, um, and, and there's plenty of others that do it, um, but where we can coordinate or if there's filling in gaps or other ways to support events downtown, uh, we hope to, the MCRC hopes to play that role as well. And on the early side, we talked about business development or recruitment, we certainly need supports of, and again, working maybe with the Chamber or MEVA or the Small Business Development Center, what are ways that we can engage and retain our existing businesses to support them downtown? So that's just sort of a quick overview of the menu of activities. We know that, you know, for, we need to track success, we need to track our baseline, we need to track success, um, going forward so that we can hopefully attract, um, use those measurements to attract future resources. These are some of those KPIs, key performance indicators, that we'll, uh, begin to look at, um, as we, um, delve into this work. We, there's some opportunities, right? This is, we've got this sort of great, um, opportunity with, um, the funding that we hope, the operational funding to come from the Richard King Mellon Foundation to support this early startup work, but we know that long-term that any organization has to be self-sustaining, and this is just sort of a quick view of what, you know, typically any organization of this sort of a community development corporation is still going to rely to some degree on public dollars, um, from DCD, et cetera, um, private philanthropic investments, and then potentially earned revenue via developers' fees or fee for service or maybe even event profits someday. Uh, and this is really just my final slide as sort of an overview, is sort of what are the next steps? So that each of those three focus areas have committees, each of those committees after today actually have met just once to begin to, um, to sort of formulate a plan and what needs to, um, I see a misspelled operational funding application there, um, but that is the funding that we anticipate from the Richard King Mellon Foundation to support early startup. Just today, the State Department of Community and Economic Development, um, published their Main Street Matters, um, program guidelines. And so in the, in the new state budget, the, what was the Main Street and Elm Street budgets under Keystone Communities went from $6 million to a $20 million statewide investment. And so, uh, we, we've already, in cooperation with city staff, have had a phone call with DCD in Harrisburg of what would designation of Meadville look like, um, to receive funding to actually potentially even employ a Main Street manager. So we'll actively be seeking that here in the coming, um, really the next two or three months. And then look at ways, again, work cooperatively to seek competitive project-based funding, um, whether that's for public improvements in the streetscape or planning dollars or project dollars. And again, we've already had some coordination phone calls, um, I have with, um, the city on, for instance, the Municipal Assistance Planning Program and, and various resources available. I handed out to, um, well, they've made it around, I'm going to hold this up. Gretchen stopped the shake.
Oh. I thought I got all of them.
I did hand out just sort of a one-page, just sort of a one-page overview of sort of recap some of the information that I shared, but, you know, why do, why does Meadville need a community revitalization corporation? Um, what will that organization do? Um, what are those strategies? And so, um, I invite Council to take a look at that, I invite you to reach out to me with any questions. Um, there is our sort of landing site, and it's changing and still changing, but makeitmeadville.org right now is still our, um, landing site, that information is on here, so, uh, we're working on social media and other main means of communication, but, um, I just want to thank Council for the opportunity, um, to just give you, provide you with this update, and then look forward to working with Council and staff on various partnerships as we move forward.
Does anybody have any questions for Andy or this one?
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy, for your time.
No, thank you.
All right, we'll move to manager's report.
Oh, sorry. In the dark.
The only thing that I have is just an update on the right-to-no request, that's about $2,700 and 48 right-to-no requests.
Um, whole business ordinance, third and final reading, zone, zoning ordinance amendment. Uh, we have a motion to approve amendment, third and final reading?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Uh, so this was presented to Council at, uh, one of their last meetings. Changes that were suggested by Council at that time were incorporated here. Those include commercial recreation indoor was changed to be allowed in the general business and manufacturing districts as a permitted use rather than as a special exception, and that commercial recreation outdoor was changed to be allowed as a special exception in the GBM district, the general business and manufacturing district, where previously it was only allowed as a permitted use in the economic development corridor.
Does anybody have any questions? But overall, the amendment to the zoning ordinance, um, is about games of skill.
Correct.
Yes.
I did a little bit of research the last few weeks. In what we used to call the Central Business District, which would be our MU3, there are currently 12 vacant storefronts, I'm not counting office space, uh, above, uh, in the Sonic Building or the old Trust Company Building. I understand there are going to be, unfortunately, three of the businesses closing their doors. So when we're passing this ordinance or any other ordinance to refine zone, our zoning ordinance, the question is to me is, do we have tenants to fill those buildings? There may be buildings that are being used for air, uh, uses that are not, shall we say, appreciated by everybody or maybe target certain individuals, but they do serve a purpose and they do keep downtown filled, uh, which enables the owners to do some maintenance and pay taxes and insurance as opposed to having a, an empty building next to you. So I would ask you to consider that when you're making a decision on this ordinance amendment and future ones.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, we're, oh, roll call.
An ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Articles 1302 and 1303 of the Meadville Zoning Code, amending the definition of commercial recreation, providing for a definition of redemption games and arcade games, and clarification of their uses within existing zoning districts, providing for an effective date, severability, and a repealer. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. New business discussion? Appointing Public Nuisance Appeal Board.
I'll turn this over to Peter for some context.
Sure. As we have a Blighted Property Review Committee, the Department of Redevelopment Law specifies an appeals procedure that, uh, tasks Council or a three-member, uh, committee of Council to act as appeals of the Blighted Property Review Committee's decisions for Blight. In addition, this appeals board, in accordance with the third-class city law, uh, can be applied to appeals of our code enforcement department's declarations of public nuisances when they apply those for, um, property code enforcement. So we do not have right now a standing of or a procedure for an appeals board, so in this instance, we're requesting, uh, Council to form amongst yourselves three members to fill such a board.
And that is due to someone wanting an appeal?
That's correct. Right, we have an appeal on the books from, uh, within the given timeframe from a decision from the Blighted Property Review Committee, and, uh, we are honoring that appeal.
And I'll just note that because, uh, Councilmember Roa is on the Blighted Property Review Committee, he cannot be on the appeal board.
Okay, so, um, can I have, so can I have a motion to create a public nuisance appeals board? Is that what we're looking for? Is that?
I think we'd want to populate it.
Right.
We want to populate it first. Yeah.
And appoint those to the board.
Okay. Um, I, I'll volunteer to be on it.
I'll be on it.
I'll also be on it.
Question for our listener, since I am on the Blighted Property Review Committee, is there a conflict with me voting on this board, from the composition of this board?
No, I, I don't think so. If you, if you feel like you should abstain for any reason, you know, you certainly can't do that, but, but I don't think it's just a general conflict for your vote.
Now, motion to create?
Motion to appoint Councilmember McKnight.
Myself and, and Gretchen to a nuisance appeal board.
I make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Um, motion set 2024, trick-or-treat for Thursday, October 31st. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Uh, as we heard last year, trick-or-treat is actually traditionally on the last Thursday of the month. Thank you. Uh, this year, that was trick-or-treat on Halloween. Um, this also is, uh, confirmed by the fact the school district has elected to have a service day on November 1st. Any questions?
It was reported differently in the paper. What would you say? In terms of trick-or-treat is the Thursday before, the Saturday before Halloween is how Keith reported it. I don't know, I don't know what to think about our local traditions.
Well, Keith is not correct. I lived here my whole life, it's always been the last Thursday, and the parade is the last Saturday.
Well, not exactly, because we went through this five years ago. There were a thousand people in council chambers complaining and urging us to reschedule.
Reschedule what?
Trick-or-treat night, so that it would occur before the Halloween parade.
Doesn't mean that's not the way it's always been, it just means people want to change to that.
No, I mean, it means that's how it was the last time we had.
One time.
31st on a Thursday.
Oh, the one time. Or however many times that's happened.
That's history.
Yeah, anyway, any other time, it's the last Thursday with the parade, the last Saturday, whether it's switched or not.
See, see how much discussion this?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's ridiculous.
Now, the question is, what do you hand out to? Yeah, just kidding. So, but, and the other thing I think that's different to this time, right, is that the school district didn't have off.
Right.
The day after. Uh, we were considering the day 31st, so that's.
Uh, nomination. All right, so, uh, roll call.
Okay, uh, McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh, motion Housing Authority appointment? Go ahead.
So the consensus of the interview committee, uh, was to appoint Joe Tompkins to fill the Housing Authority vacancy. Uh, that he and a number of other folks were interviewed by Mayor, uh, Peter, and then Marsha Yoi, who is a board member on the Housing Authority. Again, the consensus was to appoint Joe Tompkins. We also received a number of, um, letters of support, uh, for the appointment of Joe as well.
Um, kind of motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Joe's nomination.
Discussion.
I particularly, I was glad to, uh, receive the letters of support, um, from, uh, Len Chaps and from the resident council at Holland Towers. It made me feel good about the appointment, so appreciate them for, uh, expressing their support right on.
I will be voting for another candidate, I'm not voting against a candidate, I'm voting for someone. I'll be voting for Diane LeHarsky, who worked for Center for Family Services, has a unique skill set, superb credentials, and she has expressed enough interest to apply and be interviewed twice, uh, so I will be voting for a different.
So this motion is to appoint Joe Tompkins, or is this?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, uh, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Diane LeHarsky.
Vogel?
Aye.
And Kinder?
Aye. Ordinance, first and second reading, rental inspection ordinance amendment. Uh, can I have a motion to approve amendment, first reading?
So move second.
Discussion.
Uh, so this is in a good faith attempt to move forward through and settle the lawsuit that was submitted against the city by Meadville Landlords United. Uh, this amendment to the rental inspection ordinance, it removes the insurance requirement provision only. Um, and again, this is a good faith effort to hopefully move forward through the settlement.
Right on. Uh, roll call.
An ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, repealing Article 327.10 of the Meadville Municipal Code pertaining to residential landlord insurance requirements, providing for an effective date, severability, and a repealer. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Uh, motion to approve amendment, second reading?
So move.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
McKnight? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Resolution, authorize signature settlement agreement, Pygmy versus the City of Meadville. Can I have a motion to authorize signatures?
Motion. So second.
Discussion.
So this is a settlement agreement stemming from an incident which took place in 2019. It has been litigated for, since 2019, finally reached the settlement phase. The insurance will be completely responsible for the payout, no city funds, no taxpayer dollars will go to the settlement.
Roll call.
A resolution of this council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a settlement agreement in Pygmy versus City of Meadville. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes, this evening, we have Ms. Celia Caldwell. Her topic that she would like to discuss is the Washington Street traffic. So, Celia, you're welcome to stand, you're welcome to just go for right there.
Primarily, I'm interested in the condition of Washington Street for speed and noise. I think it needs to be monitored, and I think caution signs need to be applied to the street to caution for pedestrians such as children and old folks. But also, I like to include my idea on redevelopment. The Burn on Hala building on North Street has been an eyesore for many years. I think something should be looked into.
Which building was that, please?
The Burn on Hala on North Street.
Thank you, Cecilia. But do we have any, any other?
Sean, did you want to speak?
I have nothing to say.
Yeah, okay. That is all.
Okay, council member statements. Jim?
Thank you. Following up on, on this young woman's comment, it's nice weather, school's back in session. Please be careful when you're driving, we have speed limits for a reason. People on bicycles, young kids, I had one literally turn right in front of me, and if I'd been going up my street as fast as some people are, the kid would have been hit. So please watch out for children, watch out for bicycles, and obey the speed limits. And bicyclists may want to look at our laws and see whether they should be on a sidewalk. If they're five years old, no problem, but are you going to be on the street, are you going to be on the sidewalk, or are you going to switch back and forth because it suits you and you don't want to obey traffic signals? That's all, your honor.
Thanks, Jim. Gretchen?
Thanks, yeah, Jim, that did come up for me also, I've had people approach me about the bikes and e-bikes and that situation of, yeah, not on the sidewalk. So thanks for mentioning that. And I just want to give a shout-out to everyone who donated to Crawford County Cares and, especially to the Market, the Market House, it was just really great, and, well, for all the organizations, but it was a truly tremendous, very, it's a lot of gifts, so thank you so much.
Mary?
Yeah, I'd like to mention, I've heard about the noise also on Washington Street. I live in that area, and one of the things that I'm concerned about even, I don't know if a lot of you know about trucks, they have what's called either an engine or a jake brake, and that's meant for coming down hills, and it's loud, and it's very disruptive at any time of the night, and I've noticed that they go all the way through Meadville using that because it sounds, it sounds good to some of these, a lot of these young truckers. Me personally, I would like to see an ordinance where there are no e-brake or jake brakes allowed in the town because it's all flat surface. Also, that area where she's talking about, it's very, very dangerous. As you come around the curve, people are ready to continue up 27, but there's two streets that some people, I myself, make a right on because I live there, so there's been many times I've almost been rear-ended in that area because people are not paying attention. So I encourage people to pay attention, watch the signs, and watch out for our kids and our elderly pedestrians, because there's a guy that's in a wheelchair that because of sidewalks, he rides in the street. And I've watched people go by, blow the horn at him, and flip him off. I mean, I mean, let's, let's be respectful, come on, you know, that could be one of us one day, so. People to start being more considerate, and, you know, one day it could be one of us, so keep that in mind.
Right on, thanks, Larry. Autumn?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, folks, for coming tonight, appreciate folks being here and speaking. Thanks, Andy, for coming, that presentation was really helpful. I think it's nice to know for all of us to get a sense of where the CRC is. And I think, excitingly, it, you know, it touches Jim's point about the 12 vacant places that you counted downtown, right? Like, there's not anybody thinking, waking up and thinking about downtown Meadville, or if they are, they're not necessarily in a position where they can, like, do something about it, and so I think that, I'm just excited for the, for the potential that the CRC holds for our town to address, right, like what Jim is bringing up, so that we can kind of put our downtown to its best and highest use. And so thanks for your work and for leading folks through that process. I know it's been a lot, and, yeah. Also want to thank the folks who were responsible for Celebration Meadville. I was out of town for that, and I couldn't make it, and I was so bummed, my aunt was getting married, but I heard really great things, and I am just really grateful that there's just folks who all put on a two-day event just to celebrate our community. So lots of gratitude for the folks who made that event happen and made it happen so well. Again, I've heard good things. Other event coming up, Catwalk on Chestnut is this Friday, so it is the first Friday of September, there's business owners participating, and it's a beautiful display of our downtown and Army and Street, so I hope folks will come out to that. And I also just, you know, yesterday was Labor Day, and so I want to give a special shout-out, a word of thanks and gratitude to the workers in our community, to the workers at city staff, thanks for doing everything you do, and in particular for the, for the labor unions that we have with the city. So firefighters' unions and ASME and the police, police union, thanks for what you do and the service that you provide to folks every day. So I hope they, you all felt honored yesterday and had a nice day off, and so, thanks.
Thank you, Autumn. And to that I say, what, eight hours of work, eight hours of rest, and eight hours for what you will, right? I agree with that. And, yeah, Celebration Meadville was great, right? So was the college, bringing down all the students, right? That was really great in conjunction and getting to know Meadville. Andy, I'm excited for your new position because I know a lot of people who love Meadville, and you are one of those people and want what's best, so that's really great that you're in that position. Yeah, yeah, Catwalk on Chestnut Street, everybody go down, it's a cool thing to do. Meadville has lots of stuff to do, as Andy pointed out, so much that we could fill a calendar, so just be a part. And as we said, kids are coming downtown, right? We have a walkable town, choose to walk, right? Walk down through the neighborhoods and check this place out, it really is a cool spot. And I'm just thinking, is there anything else we're missing? I don't think so. I hope everybody enjoys the weather, it is finally cooled off enough for us to spend our time outside, maybe a bonfire if you're allowed in your backyard. Make sure, make sure that it is the right. Distance away from your, you know, your fences and your houses. Do not tell Evan I said that, yeah. Yeah, just enjoy Meadville for what it is, it's a great place to be, love this place, we are making it the place people want to live. So with that, I will move or ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.